Hi, and welcome to Tony Time. Well, we're getting closer to the holiday, and we have, as you know, the council members have been coming on our show. And today on our show, Mark Lessard and his lovely wife Denise. Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning. It's so great to have you here.
Thank you for having us.
So tell me, I mean, were you born and raised in Maine? Tell me. People want to know.
Sure. Yep, we're, I think my family is five or six generations here from Quebec. One of my ancestors, Ytien de La Salle, came here from France, and he was gifted land in Quebec by the king of France. And that's what brought the Lessard family here, actually established in Canada. You'll see a plaque of our family on the outside of Saint Anne's Cathedral in Quebec, because we helped to be able to build that church. So that's the claim of fame to the family. We've been here ever since, like I said. My wife and I have been here 32 years, married in the city. And we did move to New Jersey for a couple of years for business, but certainly did not want to spend time away from here. We wanted to make sure we were in the city.
You two are like so in love. I can see that. I can feel it just sitting here. I feel, and they've been married 32 years.
32 years.
How do you keep that love alive? I mean, you have a twinkle in your eye, Denise. I watch you look at Mark.
It's harder for her, because she has to, like she says all the time, you put a belt on for the roller coaster, right?
Oh, yeah. Being married to Mark is like riding a roller coaster. And I said, you know, honey, my belt's getting a little worn out here.
Yeah.
But it's very easy to do when you're married, your soulmate. I really believe that there's someone on earth for everyone. And we're very fortunate to meet each other at a young age. And I gain happiness out of making him happy, and I believe he does the same for me. So, I mean, that recipe, you can't fail.
Yeah, and Denise was, when we first met, Denise was very much an introvert. But over the years, you know, she's definitely come out of her shell. And now, when we go places, she's really my right-hand person, because when we have to visit any type of dignitary or be in a room with important people, she actually does a better job with the audience than I do now. So she's a fantastic person to have at my side.
How did the two of you meet?
Working together. We grew up in the same community, but I had no idea who Mark Lessard was. And he was just a couple of years ahead of me in high school. We met working at Shaw's in Saco. And started dating the year I graduated from high school, and that's it. I mean, end of story. We got married what in today's time would be considered very young. I was 21, I believe, and yeah, we've been together ever since.
Our first date, we went to North Conway for a drive, and we ended up leaving locally at 8:00 in the morning. We got back at 10:00 at night. Never fumbled for a word to say. It was peas and carrots, right, the very, very first day. So it was just an amazing thing. And soon after that, at the time, my younger brother and I were, we did lobstering in the summertime as a part-time job. And we needed to get the boat in for the winter. And I said, well, Denise, the only way we could spend time today is if you could come out and help me clean the boat. And at that time, my boat was up the river at Marblehead and was covered with seagull stuff. And, you know, as one of our first dates, she helped me clean my boat. And at that point, I knew she was...
She was the one.
She was the one. Yep.
Wow. That is just, I mean, you rarely these days hear this kind of story.
Yeah.
You really do.
Yep.
You know, and to have the love that the two of you have, and, you know, the camaraderie, you can see it, you can feel it.
Well, we try, I mean, everybody's been given gifts to be on earth, to do certain things. You know, we're very committed in everything that we do, whether it is involvement with the community, the involvement with, you know, with our relationship, our family. We're a very, very tight-knit group. We like to spend time with each other. But we also need to devote time to what we can benefit society with. And one of the things is I've been very long in business and doing economic type of things and moving around the country for business reasons. And I try to use some of that expertise and try to use some of that knowledge to benefit the city as best as I can.
I do see that. I do see you. I mean, I really listen when you have something to say. You say it in such a way, it's understandable, it's not threatening, it's fair, and you have passion. I see your passion come across.
You know, and over the years, you don't expect, I don't expect everybody to agree with others' opinion. I tell a lot of folks, if you like the Yankees, and I'm a Red Sox person, I'm not going to convince you to like the Red Sox, and you're not going to convince me to like the Yankees. That's just the way that it is. However, if we can, you know, bridge that gap and try to do things jointly and for the best decision, you know, for the city that we can, that's really the goal of what we're trying to do. And if people, even though they don't agree with my stance on a particular item, as long as I can make a credible argument for my opinion, and somebody could say, you know what, I don't agree with it, but he makes sense.
Right.
And so I can understand his reasoning and why he's coming around to that decision. That's really what's important.
Yeah, and I do see that. I mean, as I've said before, I've learned a lot in the short time I've been there. And it's like a sponge, you know, you're learning and you're realizing that all of you up there on the council really, really care about the city.
Yep, and it's some of the folks that take the time and have a little bit of time to be able to do that type of a role, we certainly don't, at least for myself, it's not, I'm not doing it for the income. It's not a real, you know, money-making gig that we're doing, but it's a matter of just trying to give back to the community. And for me, and I was so happy that my wife was able to join this morning, because it's really the part that provides balance in your life, which you have to have. And without having the support around you to be able to do that job and have the understanding of the time requirements that it takes, because it's a significant time that you have to spend doing this. If you don't have that support, then you can't do a good job.
You can't. I mean, you travel every day, like almost two hours.
Yeah, so what, my normal day is I leave at quarter, 6:00 in the morning, drive to Linfield, Massachusetts. It's 80 miles one way. I get to work by 7:00, maybe a little later, depending on traffic. And I head back north, you know, 4:15, 4:30 in the afternoon, so I can make it back by 6:00. That's my goal. Whether I'm going home or whether I have a 6:00 council meeting, that's what I really try to do. But it never gets really turned off, because I'm still working, you know, emails and phone calls at night. Earlier this morning, it was 5:30 that I was, you know, answering different things and talking with people in Texas at 5:30 this morning. So it's not a punch-in and punch-out. It's constant.
What gives you your drive, Mark?
It's all about family. You know, for me, it's about providing for my family to make sure that they're in a good place. I'm blessed with two children, a son and a daughter. My son is, Josh is 29. He's been married for four years. 29, right?
Yes.
Okay. She's that piece that keeps track of all of that. And our daughter just got married in October.
Yes, yep, just a little over two months ago.
Great wedding.
It was gorgeous.
Big wedding?
Not that big. I mean, we were about 80 people, so that, big enough.
Big enough.
I mean, it was beautiful. It was a magical moment. It really was.
And it goes by so fast.
Yeah, so, well, it goes by fast. When Mark first got involved in city politics, the children were very young. Amanda was a baby, and Josh was probably about five, and would watch his father on TV. And Harry is still involved, and Josh is 29, and Amanda will be 27 in February, so.
What are they involved in? I mean, what are their line of work?
Joshua is a pharmaceutical analyst for Hannaford Brothers, for Delhaize America. He's been working for Hannaford for several years. He started...
He was 15.
Yeah, so he's already has good tenure there. He's my old soul. When he was born, yeah, very young, would worry about things that children his age wouldn't normally be concerned about. So he has a tremendous head on his shoulders and...
At three years old, those bombs, do you have gas in the car?
Yeah. A three-year-old is worried about whether their mom has gas or not. So, yeah, so he does that. And he manages property for several people in the city. And I think that's his goal. He would love to be, you know, own his own company and take care of property. Amanda just graduated from UNE in May with her master's in occupational therapy, and she's currently working in Wyndham, New Hampshire, as the lead occupational therapist. So we're extremely proud of both of them.
I would think so.
They've done very well for themselves.
Yeah, and we're blessed with their choices for their spouses, too, because we inherited, you know, a fantastic young lady with Mindy that my son married, and Cam is, we couldn't have picked better for our daughter with her husband.
No, we're blessed.
So we're very blessed.
We really are.
Soon you're going to have grandchildren, huh?
One can only hope. No pressure.
No pressure, no pressure at all.
No pressure.
So, tell me, Denise, I mean, you have had to keep all the balls in the air at the beginning with the kids being little and growing up, Mark being on the road, going to work, coming home late. How'd you handle it?
I don't know. When you're in the middle of it, you don't even think about it.
You just do, right?
You just do it. You just do it, and you do it out of compassion and love, and there's a true commitment. And so whatever comes our way, we face it, and we face it together.
How were those New Jersey days?
Yeah, how were those New Jersey days?
Actually, you know what? If we had to do it again, I would do it in a heartbeat. I have to say, I was in love with the idea of moving, maybe not necessarily New Jersey, but, because we were born and brought up from this community, I had never experienced anything else. So I was anxious to do that. We knew that at the time, Mark needed to make a move with his company. And Joshua was four, almost five, and Amanda was two, going to be three. And I said, before the children are older and they're set roots in their community, let's do it now. Because we had intentions of coming back, we really didn't have intentions of staying. He had to set up a new piece of business for his company, so it was, this is the time I want you there, let's do it. So I just, I follow his lead, and I try to be as much of a support system as I can be.
Those were in the days when you didn't have your phone to be able to GPS somewhere. So the night before, Denise would have to take the kids to either the YMCA for reading time, or go to the doctors, or do something. The night before, we'd get in our car, and Denise would have a Post-It note, and I'd show her, here's the route that you have to be able to get there. And she'd write it down, so that the following day, you know, she knew how to get to that place, because, you know, where we lived, it wasn't small like Bitterford.
No, it was, like I said, it was, I felt like we had moved to a different planet, honestly.
Oh, I'm sure.
It was a great experience, but if somebody was speaking a different language here, it's French, and I knew exactly what was being said. And if you don't know someone personally here in this community, you knew them by sight.
Right.
So it was scary, but it was a blessing in disguise, because we...
It was a growth, wasn't it?
We grew closer together.
Yeah.
We did. We had no one else to rely on. Our family here is within five minutes of each other. If you need something, somebody was there to help you. We had just ourselves. I was fortunate enough to be able to be a stay-at-home mom at a very early point in our marriage, so it made the move even easier. And, yeah, I've always done what I've needed to do without even thinking about it. And Mark's always been extremely appreciative of everything.
I can tell, both of you.
Because I would get in spots where I'd be like, I'm just a stay-at-home mom. You know, I'm not contributing, there's not a lot...
Which is the most important job that there is.
There's not a lot going on in my life, and he would come home, and he would say things like that. Without you, I can't do what I'm meant to do.
Yeah.
And what's funny through the years is, having been involved with the city and other pieces, Knights of Columbus and other volunteer organizations within the city, and because I travel for work so much and I'm not available, Denise is in the community, so she ends up being the conduit to a lot of people, where it's like, hey Denise, can you tell Mark this? Or, hey Denise, can you? So she ends up fielding a lot of those type of things here in the city.
Wow, wow. Now, what line of work are you in, Mark?
Yeah, so I'm in procurement. So I spent the majority of my career in purchasing, procurement, negotiating is really what I do.
Okay.
All of the categories, it's always been in the food industry. So we follow commodities very, very closely. You have to have your thumb on what's happening economically. You need to know where oil markets are going, PMIs, purchasing manager indexes, so that you can be forward-looking on what the economy's going to do. And that helps to be able to make financial decisions on what's the best thing to do. A couple of years ago, we were looking at bonds, and, you know, is this a time to be able to do it as a city? And it was like, yes, this is the time, because we're at a lifetime low on the rates that we can get for our bonds that we do for our citizens. And if ever we want to get work done, it's a strategic time to be able to do it now. And we're never going to be able to get a better rate for our citizens than we can. So it helps with those type of decisions.
No, a lot of things make sense when you're at the council meeting.
Yep.
A lot, because, I mean, you're looking ahead.
Absolutely. Yep.
You're looking ahead. I'm now, yeah, wow.
And some of the items that you take a look at, and I've seen the full gambit of how it can be done, played at the local level in politics. Started this in 1993. It was a write-in campaign is how I first got elected. And back in the day in the 90s, it was a lot more contentious than what it is today. The council is very respectful of each other's opinions.
Yes, they are.
They may not agree with each other, but will at least hear it out, and people are not, you know, throwing things at each other, which just makes for a good atmosphere to get good work done. And even when we're not in agreement, nine of us, it's okay to have five-four votes.
Yeah.
When you have five-four votes, you have the full spectrum of, you know, your community represented. And that means that everybody's opinions are basically being supported when you have discussion and debate amongst the councils, so that's a good thing.
Yeah.
And we've got a very, very good group now. And I think that that was really emphasized with the last election, because there were only two council seats that were up for grabs. Everybody else, including the mayor, there was no opposition. So I think that really shows that the community...
Shows a lot.
...this faith in what you're doing for your judgment.
Exactly. So, you know, for the audience watching a lot of the meetings and taping, the parking's been such a big thing. Wow.
Yep. You know, you've got to remember that the city was built for foot traffic. It was built around the mills. And, you know, 150 years ago, the building was built on a postage stamp, and there was no parking. There was no idea that people were going to have one car, never mind two cars, three cars per family. And it's a matter of, where are you able to put all of those things? You need to continue to grow if you're going to be successful. And the only way that we have the ability to grow, specifically if you're looking at business standpoint, which is your best producer of taxes for your average homeowner, because it diversifies the tax base. And it won't decrease your taxes, but it will slow them. And if we can have, for our average citizen, a, you know, 1% tax increase per year, that's pretty good.
Yeah.
Okay? And the only way you do that is by luring new business into the community, which is going to be able to spread taxes like peanut butter. When you take a look at the downtown, there just is not enough parking in general to be able to lure the type of big businesses that you need to add to the tax base. And that's really what is driving the whole parking discussion, parking debate today.
Well, you know, I mean, just so I understand it, yesterday I had to go to a shop on Main Street, and I found parking. The signs were the same, two-hour parking. There was a gentleman at the meeting who talked about the meters, the kiosks. They're not on Main Street, are they?
That's correct. So Main Street, and I don't have the map or a list of every single street on how it is, but on Main Street, you can park for free.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's no charge.
But that has not changed.
That has not changed. What it is, is that on the side streets that connect in the downtown area, some of them have been put with two-hour parking limit, and some have been put with four-hour parking limit.
Okay.
And the reason behind that is if it's too certain that cars will turn over. If somebody parks in that spot, and it was for the eight hours, you're not going to be able to have customer traffic visit businesses.
Right.
Okay? But if that becomes a two-hour parking spot, the idea is it'll turn over three or four times during the day.
Sure.
Which means new customers to the city, and it means more business to the downtown. So that's the thought process.
Yeah, because I parked, and I'm looking around, and I'm thinking, well, I always do this.
Right.
That hasn't changed.
No, that hasn't changed.
So explain to me, the shop owners who come in.
Yep.
If they're on Main Street, nothing's changed.
The big, it hasn't changed for their customers. The big piece is that the parking lots has changed. So the parking lots require pay to be able to park in the parking lots.
But that's everywhere.
It's everywhere, except for what was in Bitterford a couple of months ago, because a couple of months ago, you were able to park in the parking lots for free.
Yeah.
But that has now changed. And if you look at a lot of other cities around us, and you don't even have to just stay in Maine, but there's a lot of places that it is a charge to park in parking lots.
Yeah.
Because for a city to be able, it's maintenance. In the winter, you're plowing, you're removing snow. In the summertime, you're maintaining these parking lots. And if you do not charge for the parking in the parking lots, that means that somebody down by the coast, or up in Guinea Road, or out on South Street, they're actually paying for the upkeep of that parking lot.
Yeah.
Okay? Where now, it's dedicated to the people that are using it. So the people that use it are going to pay for it.
This makes so much sense to have you break it down this way. I mean, to me.
And it's, it's really the, it's the idea behind it. That doesn't mean that everybody has to agree with the thought process.
Right.
Okay? I think more people would agree that over time, 20 years from now, the parking situation and the ability to park in downtown would have to be different than what it is 20 years ago.
Yeah.
And to be able to have growth in businesses come here, which diversify the tax base, okay? And it slows the amount of tax increase that the average homeowner has every year, doesn't decrease it, it slows it.
Right.
That's the goal, because 80% of our budget is fixed with people that are providing services, okay? 80% of it is personnel. So you're going to have increases every year in your budget. But if we can slow it by luring business to the city, that's a good thing.
And they charge for parking lots everywhere. I mean, since I've moved to Maine, I go to Portland, and I pay $23 for...
Right, and we don't even think twice about it.
We don't. We give them the money, we pull in, and we walk around Old Port or whatever.
Sure.
Kenny Bunkport, you pay to park.
Right.
You know, it's not $23, but you pay to park.
Right.
Let's not even talk about Manhattan.
Yes, I had a person that worked for me when I was in New Jersey, and she was a New York City girl, and she lived at the corner...
34th and Lex.
34th and Lex is where she...
Ooh, wow, that's an area.
And she had a 600-square-foot apartment, and this is back in 1994, that she was paying $1,200 a month for the apartment, and $500 a month for the parking spot.
Yeah.
In a parking garage for her apartment back in 93, 94.
Yeah.
So that shows you what the cost is, depending on where you are.
And even now, I mean, I'm going into Manhattan on Thursday for a couple of days, and I'm going to park in my old neighborhood, because I know alternate sides of the street parking. So I'm going to get in at 11:00, so I can take that side of the road. I've got it all figured out in my head. You know, because parking in the parking lot for 48 hours is going to cost me 100, 150.
Right, right. And all of these, you have to look more from a macro level. The parking issue is a micro level. You're drilling down much deeper in the process. If you look at it from a macro level, it's a matter of being able to, like I said, diversify the tax base. When you look at Bitterford, we're at the top end of York County as it relates to taxes, our mill rate and the formula, et cetera. So people pay here in Bitterford for their taxes higher than in other communities. But you also have to remember that Bitterford is a service center. It's old.
Yeah.
Okay? The definition is old. Bath, Brunswick, South Portland, Lewiston, Auburn, these are all of the original settlements of where people came to locate. And they came here because of the mills, and it was foot traffic, so everything is very, very condensed. So our infrastructure is very old and costly. When you go out into the, you know, the Berwicks and some of these, you know, Standish and some of the other outlying areas where the growth is coming, because the cost is less for people to live there, they don't have the cost of infrastructure that the service centers have, okay?
Yeah.
And that's one of the things that we're burdened with for being an old city and that we have to manage. And if done properly, and we've got to continue to diversify, we've got to continue to have growth in our city, and that's what's going to benefit us long-term.
See, that remind, I grew up in Indiana, Gary, Indiana. Michael Jackson was down the street from me, okay? I remember with my family, they're all European, they're Slovaks, they are Serbian, Italian, Irish. But we had in Gary, Indiana, the mills. You had inland steel, which is still going. You had your Ford plant. So everybody from Europe would come to a part of Indiana, just like here, to be able to work at the mills and get work. And it kind of reminds me of that kind of move.
Right, yeah.
You know, with the mills, I mean, you have people coming over, and they wanted to work.
Right.
Same here, right?
Yeah, when you talk to my, I talked to my parents, and the last time I was there talking with my folks, and my mother was recalling about how her parents worked in the mills, both of them, right downtown. And my mother would go out to the farm for the summer, when it wasn't school, to be able to live with aunt and uncle out in Lyman, so that way my grandparents would be able to focus in on just working during the summer to make up and have, you know, less, more time available during the school season. And she remembers those days fondly of being out on the farm and visiting with relatives, but it was because the mills were very important, and that's what really drove the economy.
Exactly, exactly. I mean, I know all of my uncles, and all my cousins, their children went to the mills to work.
Sure.
And they still are to this day.
Right. And that's different than what it is today. Today, remote work is getting to be bigger and bigger. Broadband is going to be extremely important for the infrastructure here in our state to be able to provide that quick access for people to be able to do jobs, not having to go and drive to bricks and mortar, you know, and sit at a seat at a desk. They can do the same job remotely and probably be more efficient, because, you know, drive time is cut down. They're able to spend more time doing the work. It becomes more flexible within their work schedule. When we first got married, it was a one-income house, and we were very fortunate that Denise could do the work of raising our kids, and they've hugely benefited. But in today's world, it's going to be a two-income family.
Yeah, it does.
Fortunately, it does.
It does. I mean, I've always been self-employed my whole life. I mean, I've always been self-employed my whole life. I have never worked for anyone.
Sure.
If I had an idea to create a company or a business, I found that pretty easy, and that's not being condescending. I mean, I worked hard.
Sure.
But once you make it, you have to maintain it.
Right.
That's the hard part.
That's the hard part.
And you're absolutely right, Tony, because it's one of the things that, you know, that we talk a lot about is sustainability.
Yeah.
Is you can't just have an idea and do something to check off the box that you did it. It's gotta become, how is it going to be sustainable over time? And is the process that you're thinking about doing able to be repetitive over time and be able to continue to do it?
Right.
So... You're excellent at that, because we talked about it earlier. He's always talking about Domino 21.
Yeah.
It's not the one that's in front of you, it's the 21st Domino down the line. How is it gonna affect that one?
And that's true.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because, I mean, I know when I started my talent agency, it was a trade show agency. I had to work, and I, with cold calling, you remember cold calling?
Absolutely.
Yep.
I liked cold calling. I got to talk to strangers, and that's how I built my company.
Sure.
One call after another. I would go to the trade shows, pick up a showbook, and start on page one. You know, and then I learned, you go into the trade show, you walk through, you mark the book who's using talent, and now it cuts your work down. And this was a learning process. I mean, it was very meticulous, and it took a lot. I mean, I can sit in a corner here with noise going on.
Sure.
And cold call. But that's how I built my business.
Well, what it does is it also gives you a lot of data points that come in that you wouldn't normally see.
Right.
So, it broadens your ability to be able to make a decision, and it makes for a better decision.
Do you think, though, today, Mark, are we losing that?
You know, it's funny, I think if you were to take a look at the past couple of years, I would say that we were on a trend to lose that, but I think now, young folks are having to do it through a resurgence with just what they have to do, because there needs to be an involvement in everything now. So, I think the tide has changed where with the kids that are recently graduating, or will be over the next five or 10 years, they will have to do more networking to be able to be successful.
But now they can do it on the internet.
Right. And that's the, can be the anchor to it, okay?
Yeah.
Because I still, I do it the old-fashioned way. I pick up the phone and I call and I talk to people.
I do too. I still do, yeah.
And that's the blind spot that I think by having the internet and having all of the technology available to them, is the interpersonal skill. That's the piece that'll miss.
I agree with you, because when I would cold call, and I built the company with the Fortune 500 companies, but it was, they liked the tone of my voice on the phone, so they would call me back.
Yep.
And you'd find something in common. You'd find what they want for, I mean, the FMI Show, Food Marketing Institute.
Sure.
The Restaurant Show. You've got a trade show for everything in your house.
Yep.
So, every client I worked with, I mean, with the FMI and the Restaurant Show, it was Coca-Cola.
Sure.
It was Nabisco before Kraft bought them. You know, you learn the history of the companies.
Right, exactly.
And you did a lot of lunches and a lot of dinners. I learned a lot from these companies.
Yeah. And that's important to be able to, you know, get out there and understand what other people, what makes them tick. It's real important.
One of the companies, which, I'll mention the name, because I do adore them, Coca-Cola. They're out of Atlanta.
Yep.
You know, I mean, they wanted someone from the company to be on that trade show floor. They would hire 30 models, every ethnic race.
Sure.
And this was a time that, I'm working for Coke, and Pepsi's down the way. A Coca-Cola girl could never be seen talking to a Pepsi girl, not even in the parking lot.
Oh, wow.
No, it was like, if they were seen, they were fired.
Sure.
If there was a scuff on the shoe of that talent, they would say, hey, Tony, there's a scuff.
Right.
Go fire her.
Right.
I mean, the rules were really, and that's how I learned.
Oh, that's exactly how it was years ago, because I remember a fellow that I worked with who went to a birthday party for a grandchild, and his daughter ended up buying ice cream from a company that was a competitor.
Yeah.
And he left the birthday party. He wouldn't stay because...
No, it's true.
Yeah, that's what it was.
That is very true, because I became very good friends with a woman at Coca-Cola.
Sure.
My niece was over, she bought a six-pack of Pepsi. It was in the refrigerator, same thing.
Yep.
And she opened the refrigerator and said, what is that Pepsi doing in there? Get it out of here. She couldn't leave, because she was staying with me. But she said, get rid of it.
Yep.
That's the way...
Wow.
You dealt with things. So, do you think, Mark, the way we've learned, hands-on, phone-calling, meeting, and now as you were just saying about the internet.
Yep.
And communication on that, do you think it's still as solid when a company is working with another company, a service company supplying? Do you think it's as solid?
It depends on what your definition of solid is, because each of these companies are having to report to stockholders and have their bottom line at the level it needs to be. Top line is very important, which is how much the company makes.
Right.
Everything that it sells. The margin is important, that's how much you make on the money that is coming in. And the bottom-line receipts, which is how much you actually make from a dollar standpoint, is extremely important. I think over time, to be more efficient, there's had to be outsourcing to different areas to be able to find a way to maintain margin and make sure the company's as profitable that it can be for stockholders that buy their stock.
Right.
And over time, they need their stock value to be able to stay at least level and grow for them to be successful. And that's what's created that type of outsourcing.
Yeah.
I don't know that, you know, I can't tell you whether it's better or worse. I understand why it's being done.
Yeah.
You know, I always prefer when I make a phone call on something, on a credit card, and I'm speaking to somebody here in the U.S., that always makes me feel good.
Yeah, exactly.
But I understand why it's being done.
Well, I do too. So, now, where do you see the city, Bitterford? What's your goal for that?
You know, I think the city is on a really good trajectory. Over the past four, five years, we've really been able to stabilize, I believe, our tax When you look back four, five years ago, the delta between us and other communities in York County for how much we charge, there was a greater difference between us and everybody else. We were in first or second place by a lot. We've slowed our, we've slowed our increases by diversifying, and it's helped others to be able to creep up and catch up with us, which is a good piece for the common taxpayer that we have in our city. I think we're on a great trajectory for luring businesses here to the city. Bitterford is now a destination for people to move to. It wasn't 20 years ago.
Right.
There's a very good vibe in the city as far as people wanting to move here. So, I think there's a lot going for it. There's some great things that I believe are going to happen downtown. Certainly hoping that over the next couple of years, there'll be a replacement on the Merck property, to be able to have jobs put there. I know there's been some inquiries about locating 100, 200, 300 jobs there, good-paying jobs. And when you can create jobs and you have business growth, I think you're successful.
Great. Do you think, because, I mean, Bitterford's gonna go through a lot of changes, and people are kind of standing strong and saying, no, don't do this. Do you believe they have a fear of change?
Everybody does. I mean, I think that's innate in everyone. I know after Denise had been a stay-at-home mom for a long time, and the kids had left the house, there was a want to be able to get back out in the work world, but that was a huge change.
That was a huge change, and that was scary for me.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I think everybody...
Everybody has a fear of change.
Has a fear of some type of change, or, well, we've always done it this way, and why should we do it differently? Both being born and brought up from this community, we've had the opportunity to see all the different changes. And I can remember as a youngster, downtown Bitterford was the only place you shopped. My grandmother worked at a beautiful department store called Butler's, and there were several like it, and it was the heyday, so to speak, or perhaps even before then. And then we went through quite a bit of time where downtown wasn't the destination, and you were going in other communities to do your shopping, in bigger department stores.
The malls.
The malls and things like that, because that became really popular for quite a while, those type of destinations. As an adult, working downtown, I worked part-time at Bitterford Savings, their Main Street office. I absolutely loved to see what's happening here in our community, and I'm very proud of it.
Oh, yeah.
All these beautiful, unique retail spots and food. We talk about food a lot at work.
Yeah.
And there are a lot of great little destinations, like, well, where are we gonna get lunch today? And other people from other communities are seeing this and are coming here. They're not going to the Old Port anymore. So, young professionals are, were a destination for them, and that's exciting. But along with that comes change.
Change.
So...
And we have a lot in the city that folks don't have. We have Ocean Community.
Yeah.
We have an airport. We have a downtown that's got long lineage of what was there, but is now turning around and thriving to go in a different direction. In Western Bitterford, there's farmland. There's a lot...
There's a Catholic school.
Catholic school that is...
U and E.
U and E, yeah.
Yeah, we have a lot.
Yep.
And see, when you say that, and the way you say it, both of you, hopefully, the audience will, I mean, a lot of people know that. But when you say it like that, it just makes it so much more real.
Yeah, and you also have to think and go past the borders that we have here in the city of Bitterford. We've been trying to do more and more with Saco. We've been successful on doing a few projects and having a few shared personnel between the two cities. And that type of regionalization or sharing also helps, you know, in the growth, because now you're able to spread out the cost of doing business amongst a greater, a bigger pie, and the services can be provided at a greater depth. So, it's thinking differently. You can't, the 8-track tape is no longer here.
No.
The cassette player is no longer here. It's going to continue to change. And unfortunately, it requires, you know, forethought and thinking of what is the next piece to be able to make sure you keep up.
So, what advice would you give the audience, the people in Bitterford? What advice would you tell them to perhaps give a comfort level, perhaps, you know, whatever you feel hasn't been said?
Well, I think it's important, first of all, get involved, at whatever level that you can, whether it's with your church, a neighborhood, something. If you don't like what's going on in the school systems or in the city, run for a seat. Have your voice heard. If you have an opinion on a certain subject in the city, either call us, write us, come to a council meeting, share your opinion. We certainly don't have a lockdown on the best opinions on everything. So, we're more than happy, especially myself, I'm more than happy to hear anybody's idea of how to be able to do it better. So, you know, really, it's get involved and be heard.
That's good advice. Now, you mentioned before the show, and I don't know if I should mention this, but in time, you'd like to run for governor.
Yeah, I mean, it's always been something that's been on my bucket list of things to do.
Yeah.
You know, when the day comes, and I get called to a better place than where I am today, I don't ever want to be able to look back and say, I would've, should've, could've.
Right, I agree with that theory.
Okay?
Yeah.
I don't want it to be a situation where I didn't at least give it a shot. It's always been on my list of things to do. I'd actually, I actually talked to some people about running this past year, but it's a matter of being so involved with the city and work. Timing wasn't right. But I know in my future, it's something that I'm going to at least attempt to accomplish. So, I know it's in my future.
Your ambition.
Well...
And your drive.
I've got the best support that you could ever have, so...
You sure do. She's amazing. You are amazing, Denise.
Thank you.
I mean, you really, I mean, I can just see it. As we're talking and having conversation, you know, you're like one person.
And that's how it is. And it's about having that type of support is what makes you successful. When you don't have to worry about things, and you know that it's being accomplished, and it's being done better than what you could do it, you can focus your attention on the things that you need to get done. And it was a perfect time for us to be able to come and sit with you, to be able to talk about things.
Appreciate it.
It's a great time of year, you know, with Christmas coming up next week. It's always a special time for family and to be around with friends. It's a, you know, a special time for us, and, you know, we certainly hope that everybody has a very joyous time of year, that everybody has a successful and very healthy 2019, you know?
Most important.
And that's definitely the most important piece. And, you know, if there's reason and thinking that we could be doing things better, certainly share that with us, and it won't fall on deaf ears.
I see that. I see that, you know, when I'm sitting there and I'm taping. And when you open it up to the public, each and every one of you hear that person speaking.
Yep, absolutely.
I mean, the last meeting, a gentleman got up with some facts that were not correct. Jim Bennett said, come to my office. I mean, he literally put that invitation out.
Yep.
Because the information you have is not correct.
Right. And there's so many different ways that you can look at and derive a decision, and you just want to be able to make sure that it's being calculated correctly.
Exactly.
Is what it is. And what ends up happening is any time that there's misinformation from whoever that it is, whether it's intentional, non-intentional, then it can create a stir that doesn't create accuracy on how it should be viewed. So, really, you know, and we try to be able to be accessible for everybody and be able to answer the questions, so that way...
You do.
You know, to give them everything that they need, and it's good that you brought it up to be able to say that we're willing to share. You know, we're willing to be able to help.
You are.
And we've got a great staff here in the city of Bitterford. All of our folks do a great job, you know, in all of our departments, so we've got a lot to be proud for.
Absolutely. Fortunately, we're running out of time.
Okay.
My God.
Well, it was a great morning.
It went so fast.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Well, thank you for taking the time and coming down, because I know how busy you guys are.
Yep, sure.
And, you know, there's one thing I've got to say out loud, and I'm listening, and I'm absorbing, and two of you, it's almost like... Okay, I hope this makes sense. The two of you are focused. You've got the base. It's a healthy base. And it's like, in order for both of you to achieve, you've learned the gift of letting all the clutter and noise in the world not affect you.
And we got a lot of clutter and noise.
We do. Trust me.
But I had to say that before the show's over. It's like, okay, this is us. This is what we're going to do. We want the best. But you've learned the gift of putting the clutter and noise in place.
Well, we appreciate that. I mean, it's...
That's what I pick up.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We appreciate that.
Well, this is where it starts. And you can't achieve anything else if you don't have a good foundation. And that's in anything.
In anything, yeah. Definitely.
In anything, so...
Well, have a wonderful holiday.
Yes, all the best to you. Merry Christmas. And to everybody else that might be watching, Merry Christmas. Happy holidays and success in 2019.
Absolutely. So have a good holiday. We'll check back later on if there's any point you want to make in 2019. Let's do it. I'm here for you.
Very good.
Both of you. And I want to thank the audience for watching our show today, and have a good holiday. We'll see you soon. Bye-bye.